Just the executive are introducing themselves and tell us what you like to shoot or what your camera using just a little bit about about you, anything you want to say about yourself, Sigurd.
Um, I have been part of the club for four years, I think now, maybe five if I lost track. I shoot a Canon, I just upgraded last year to a 90D, which seems to be kind of a cool camera to work with. And um, mostly landscapes and things that don't that don't judge me is what I shoot.
And
Good description.
And Sigurd is our secretary as well as does field trips for us. Um, Gail, are you here? How about Aneta?
I'm here. So I'm Aneta. I shoot with a Canon D6. Um, mostly all prime lenses and I do portraits, weddings, families, and I'm starting to get into floral photography as well.
And Aneta has volunteered to help us with some ad segments for this year. Um, Gerard, are you on there somewhere?
No, he's not here.
Not here. And Rolf, do you want to introduce yourself?
Okay, my name is Rolf Hallchukner. Um, as I just mentioned, I did a trip through Europe and was shooting with with this small Sony. Was just looking if I find the model number, but I don't. Yeah, I wanted to travel light, so I used a Sony Compact. Yeah, and it has a ton of features, so I got a lot of pictures. Haven't gotten through yet.
Awesome. And Rolf hasn't been around because he's been in Europe, so we haven't assigned him anything to do for us for our executive meeting yet.
Right.
Yet. Um, so one more chance for Gail, you haven't logged on. Okay, so that's um, that's all the executive, I guess, that we have up here tonight. So thank you guys. Um, and I was kind of wondering if there's anybody in the general membership that might want to take over our Instagram account. If you want to just message the club at contact, then we'll get you going on that because that's been lagging very much so lately. Um, we're going to start with the theme. Um, and Ralph Ralph has volunteered to do the thing uh, tonight, so I think I am going to share my screen because and hopefully I don't lose you guys. I kind of lost everybody at our executive meeting the other night. And um, sorry, let's do something here. And looking, but we didn't do it. So we'll try sharing the screen here and then Ralph can go soon. Ready to see one picture right now?
Yes.
Good.
This smaller. Your screen has covered up my notes. Uh, think it's out of the way. That's your button. Uh, oh, there we go. Okay, got my notes. Everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, let's make this a little bigger for me to see it. Now the wine glass. Okay, um, did we had like five or six members a couple nights ago on Tuesday night, got images, critiquing them, discussing them, saying what we liked about them, what we didn't like, what could be improved, trying to be, you know, nice and critical, but not nasty, you know, that kind of stuff. Anyway, we have a wine glass here and general consensus was a very pleasing image, very creative, especially to get a double reflection going on. Notice that the theme is actually reflection, not reflections. You don't document that though. The phone really pops. It's got great, like you almost see the apps there, it's great. Uh, the vertical orientation worked really well. And the repeating reflection was a was very, very pleasing. The liquid is a complementary color to the blues in the phone. You can see there's a bit of red down there, red brown. And the tilt to the the angle of the image is taken so the camera is a bit for the wine glass is a bit of a diagonal, adds a bit of uh, dynamics to the image as well and makes it stronger. The glass seems to be holding the reflections and it kind of like a drink is kind of cool. Uh, the other thing about the angle was is Laura Lee commented, if I remember correctly, is like, you see this frequently Instagram posts where the the girl taking a selfie and her head looks really huge and her feet are small. So the same effect here with the the bowl of the wine glass being large and the stem shrinking into the distance. Um, and uh, really filled the frame with the subject. It's really well handled. And uh, this one was by Wayne Dornick. I think I saw Wayne here. Matter of fact, I see him right there. Do you want to speak about your image?
Yes, uh, well, thanks very much. I just actually kind of stumbled upon this. I wasn't sure what I was going to do for uh, the theme and then I had a glass of wine on the counter and walked by it and uh, I think I was holding my phone and I actually uh, took a picture of it with uh, another cell phone. And yeah, some interesting things that were happening here really. Um, so it I started pursuing it further and uh, trying a few different things with it. I ended up actually shooting this from or I'm sorry, with uh, my Pentax and played with the uh, direction of the uh, reflections that are showing up there. And I I liked the way it happened when there were two. At one point I was uh, trying to get a picture of the wine glass itself uh, on the screen of the iPhone. Um, that didn't work out quite so well. That's why I just went back to the uh, older, more colorful image of the uh, 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 home screen on the iPhone. One thing I I noticed with that, it was really tough to get uh, much of anything really in focus on the reflections there. And I think for some reason it's uh, I don't know, bouncing off the just the two walls of the uh, surface of the glass. So it was an interesting challenge and had some fun with it and trying to do something a little different.
Thank you. It's always good when it turns into a project.
Thank you.
Go for it. Looks like Park Lake, we decided. Everybody loved the the softness of the image. I mean, I mean, softness being more of a feel of it than the actual, everything is sharp, but it looked soft, if you know what I mean. Um, the band of cloud in the both the sky and the reflection frames the the trees really well and adds some bit of dramatics to the whole thing. Uh, this tones and softness are really good. Um, the brighter parts frame the trees nicely. The trees also form an arc that is quite pleasing. Get this little humps going on there. See her eyes drawn right into the center trees. Um, speculation about whether it would be better in black and white, which is a possibility. You might pop the clouds a bit more and get rid distracted colors, but uh, we quite like this. Um, some people comment, the color is a bit crab, but it is, it looks like an overcast day and that's what you get sometimes. That's what it is. Uh, but we we felt the image was very peaceful, very pleasing. Um, the black and white could give a totally different feel if it went that way. Uh, the horizon line is well placed, uh, nice panorama. And this one was by Maximo. Max, will you want to tell us about your image?
Yeah, um, it was actually a day I was chasing a storm and I got really cool storm pictures and then the storm kind of passed away. And then it ended up being a very calm looking day where all the colors were like this kind of pastel looking. I don't know how to say it, but um, yeah, and I I played around with it black and white and some something just didn't work with it as much, kind of lost that that uh, peaceful feeling that you were talking about.
Mm hmm.
Um, well, very classic reflection on the water picture, I guess.
Yeah, hey, right when you, sometimes when you switch to black and white, it really changes the mood and now it's not the mood you'd want. You don't change it.
It looked a bit more dramatic in black and white, actually.
Yeah, I can see in for black and white and more dramatic, but depends what you want. So yeah. Nice image.
Thank you.
Pretty cool, eh, guys? Really makes you think. We don't have a lot written about this because we spent all our time studying it and trying to figure it out. Uh, interesting use of mirroring. What is it? The brightness, the moodiness are both great. The thing looks like a guy with a beard. And how was it done? Um, yeah, that's what we spent like, I don't know how long speculating on this one. So uh, we'll leave the speculation to everybody else they can wonder too. It's really worthwhile zooming in on this picture and moving around. You can see that the eyes, for lack of a better word, the the little blue dots up in the tops, top bit. Um, they aren't quite the same. So you think, is this really a mirror image? What is this? So this one is by Denise Nielsen. Is she here today to tell us about it?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, this is actually, if you were to just rotate this ninety degrees counterclockwise, it's just a reflection in the lake. It's Burton Lake and it's on one of those very, very rare days when the water is calm. And it's just um, the rocks like on the on what would be my right side is the actual image in the air and then the left side is the the reflection in the water. And the the white lines are just uh, sticks like logs that were laying on the shore. And I did put the eyes in. They were from a the reflection of another picture that I I took at the same time, but.
Hmm. Now is that just underexposed? Why is it so dark?
I did, I did really, because it was, it is like the face in here is so it's almost demonic, right? So really, I took the exposure way, way down.
Hmm.
And it would look uh, a little more evil.
Very inventive.
Very creative, yeah.
Yeah, you had us all wondering. Thank you very much for that one. The exposure on this one is well handled. Uh, the wispy bit of cloud is really nice touch on the right. Um, the trees in the right also provide nice depth to it because you've got foreground, middle and background happening in the image. Um, stillness of the water is really good and it really brings up the color in the sky. You get the blue and the blue and it's a nice tack sharp uh, reflection going on there. Um, framing is good. And uh, this is actually my image. So if anyone wants to say anything about it, it goes up. So it'll take about four degrees and bam, early in the morning run with my phone, of course, because that's what I run with. And my wife and dog. And uh, yeah, it was like stop, take picture, stop, take picture because it was just, it was spectacular. So. Next one, Laura Lee.
Yeah, it's the image, Ralph.
Oh, another one we wondered about a lot. This is uh, this is worth studying, study it for a moment here, people. Our first comments were, wow, it was fun finding the reflection line. This is this, this photograph is a real puzzle and looks like a good project that somebody did. Um, one of the questions was, does this work as a reflection in quotations? Part of it is, maybe not all, but uh, great shapes, interesting light. Is it on an umbrella? Is that one of our questions? And this is by Byron Lee. Is Byron here? Because we need some explanations going on here.
Uh, yeah, so this is actually two mirrors side by side. You can see the line on the top right hand corner is where the mirrors meet. And then it's put at about a thirty degree angle to create the reflections. And uh, I put the one red carnation in the on the bottom portion of of the table. And uh, then I stood up the daisy in the same same spot. Um, the reflections of the carnations are actually the reflections of the red carnation. But what I did, just to add a little interest and accomplish what I wanted was to get you guys thinking was that I masked off each of the reflections, created a new layer and changed the hue on each of the reflections. So the red carnation is the original is is not the reflection, that is the actual flower.
Ooh, you tricky fellow, you.
Hmm.
I was thinking about not changing the colors of the reflections, but I thought it would give a little bit more interest to just change each of the reflections colors.
Hmm.
So this was done on the kitchen table. I had some nice morning light coming in. So all those bright spots are, you know, the the sun uh, hitting the piece of black velvet that I laid everything out on.
Hmm. So it's just two flowers, right?
Just two flowers, the one red carnation and the one daisy.
Yeah. Very cool. I can see where the one mirror line is and trying to place the second one.
Well, I think
Oh, I think I get it now.
Between the two mirrors, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the vertical line that is above the daisies is where the mirrors meet. And the lines between each of the reflection, that is the bottom of the mirror. And it looks that way because the mirror is actually cut with a slate curve in it.
Ah, that's why. I seen because it was curved. Okay.
Way too much going on. Love it.
Okay, you win.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Byron.
All right.
There were some people working hard this week, month, whatever. We got some great challenging images to try and figure out. Okay, bird reflection. Your eye is really drawn to the mirror. The background's a bit distracting. Uh, they're wondering about a tighter crop, perhaps vertical because then um, that power line kind of thing and that great thing don't need to be there. So you could crop into vertical, lose part of the frame of the door too. I think perhaps make it a stronger one. The gum definitely has to go, a little green bit of gum there. That's pretty easy to get rid of. Um, perhaps a lower F stop to blur the background. But most of our discussion ranged around where where you had to focus for this image and whether you focus on the mirror, the image in the mirror, because the the image in the mirror is as sharp as that stuff in the background behind it, the graffiti. So you're thinking they must be in the same focal plane. So it must be that bird must be the same distance from the wall or from the mirror as that wall is from the mirror. So that was our speculation. And this is Donna Krueger. Is Donna here tonight?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Okay, um, I did have a really uh, cropped in uh, an image that was cropped in a lot more. And then I thought it was um, a little more confusing with more of the background in there. I missed the gum entirely. Thanks for that. I'll get rid of that. But uh, um, I focused on the image in the mirror. And I think I had it at a I forget what I was at, but uh, and that's, that's why it was that's why the the wall and behind is looking more in focus as well. The the woodpecker is quite a ways behind. Um, it's not as close as the wall that's right there.
Hmm.
I I like it that you've got that uh, flickering focus and the wall in focus. It it does uh, raise those questions and that's, I think, what makes it an intriguing image as well.
Hmm.
Yeah, I I didn't even see the gum.
It's okay with the gun. That's two seconds in Photoshop.
Right.
Yeah. No, but we found it was really interesting, a lot of discussion. Okay, where did you focus? Did you focus on the mirror? Did you focus on the edge of the mirror? It's like, no, you have to focus on on the image in the mirror, which is actually further away than the mirror. So very well done.
It was on the mirror or on the, yeah, on the mirror in the image. Yeah.
No, excellent. Well done.
Thank you.
Like I said, people were working hard this month. This is another fun one. Your eye just roams around the whole image. It's uh, you have the blues, you got the browns, you have these white lines. You got this like little river kind of going through the middle of it. Um, abstract, really interesting. The wavy bits are great. Exposure is great. We we don't know where to look. Perhaps using the quote quote, white river as a focus, the many abstract images do not have a focus point. Um, it was just a great photo. I mean, you look at a little, if you look at the bottom, the small brown blob at the bottom, you see all the stuff kind of going on around you. You go like, what is that? How is this all happening? So here we have Ian Thompson to explain his image to us.
This I I um, I hadn't really noticed this um, happened before in any of the photographs I've ever taken. And I couldn't figure out how I managed to get all the little filigrees, the little filaments that come up around all of the spots along the edges of all of the um, uh, brown areas and the and any little spot that was a a spot in the in the water. So um, I I checked this, the shutter speed and it was an eight hundredth of a second and I couldn't figure out how that would have happened either. So it's going to be an ongoing um, exercise in finding out how that happened. Because I've been through thousands and thousands of photographs and I've never seen this happen before. Uh, so that's really what drew my eye to this whole um, bit of uh, uh, photograph here. And then it did look to me like uh, something that maybe Ed Bertinski might have shot uh, from an aerial view over uh, some part of Canada or or the continent somewhere uh, out in the uh, north. So it kind of gave you that uh, overall landscape look in a little chunk of water at Cameron Lake. So that's kind of where that came from and how, where it's going.
Hmm. Yeah, we were wondering the same thing. And and did you, did you have images beside, like in line with this one that didn't have that effect?
Nope, they were all the same.
Oh, really? I wonder what it was doing.
Hmm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep trying it and see what happens. Maybe it'll, maybe it happened all along and I just never noticed it before or not, or didn't. So we'll see.
What what was your subject here that is giving us the blue and the
Well, the blue is the water in Cameron Lake and the the brown and the gray are the trees in the mountains around the lake and the snow is the is the uh,
Oh, the white.
Snow on the mountains and perhaps ice along the river, along the edge of the lake, but I'm pretty sure that's all snow from the tops of the mountains.
Ian, are you getting a Moira effect on the brown part?
I don't think so. I think that's just the movement of the water.
Hmm, it actually, I've had a similar effect. Uh, if I'm using the Topaz sharpen uh, software, where it'll actually take something and make lines actually too too sharp.
Yeah.
Were you using sharper on Lightroom or?
I used the texture tool, but that's about it. But there, they, the lines were pretty sharp to start with. Like they were, they were obvious when I, when I looked at the photograph in the first place that these little filaments were sticking up all over the place.
Oh, and so that's on the original file?
Yeah.
Well, sounds like a project.
Climate change.
Could be. Thanks very much. I love the way it pops up by photo every time. Okay, got a black and white today and uh, a lot of good discussion went on around this one. Now, the first thing that came up was is the top too bright? Like is the that white area behind the stump too bright? Um, their comment was it lacks pop, perhaps manipulating some of the sliders could help the pop and bring up the textures, but it always depends on what the photographer's goal is. Sometimes they don't want to pop. Uh, the stump and reflections are great. Uh, the framing of the sticks works okay. Uh, somebody would like the water a bit more still. And could use it some more separation. I can't remember what the reference to that comment was. Um, no, it's well done image. I'm the framing of those two logs, whatever works really well. Almost like chopsticks trying to pick it up. Um, other speculation was, is this an infrared picture? Anyway, this is Gord Ayers. Gord, do you want to tell us about your image?
Well, I took this at a campground up in the Elbow Valley area. Um, and I was, I lightened the background intentionally to to give me some separation between it and the uh, interesting tree in the water. Um, it's not that bright on my screen, but maybe I'll blame Zoom for that. Um, um, yeah, that's about all I can say. And uh, you know, when you show up to take a shot and the water's just got a little ripple in it, well, you kind of deal with it, so.
Yeah, no kidding, eh? No, well done, well done. It's uh, very interesting. Thanks very much.
So it's not an infrared? Gord? It's not red or infrared treatment on it? No?
No, no, it's pretty much a straight photo, just a lot of dodging and burning going on.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, we had a good discussion about this one again. Um, we all liked it. It's a nice sunset, great reflection. And then we started wondering about, okay, would we have taken three steps closer to get the whole tree reflection instead of the partial tree reflection? Then you lose the great line of the post and the chain, which is obviously what the goal of the image was to get both. Um, they like the detail on the on the island. You can make a detail there. It's got a nice composition, leading lines from left to right. Uh, perhaps bring the shadows up a bit. And uh, bit of ghosting behind a large tree, somebody said, which looks a little white back there, but I'm not sure if that's real artifact or what the scoop's going on there. And this one is by Carla Whiteside. Is Carla here tonight? No. I'd say no, no. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make on Carla's image? Perhaps some things they'd like to see done or what they really love about it?
I think um, it's a really nice image. I just think there's a little bit too much of a dead space on the bottom right corner.
Hmm.
Um, at least there, there should be something maybe leading you in or whatnot. But then I guess it would become a bit crowded. Um, so.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Next. People are spending some time at Henderson Lake. First comment was, we love the clouds, the reflection of the clouds and the tack sharpness of the First comment was, we love the clouds, the reflection of the clouds and the tack sharpness of the rocks. The detail on the rocks, really, really well done. Just a, a very soothing image, we all felt. It's just kind of like, it's nice and soft and wonderful. Light just kind of the end of the day or the beginning of the day, one of the two. We're commenting, maybe you need a red kayak on the right or something, you know, punch it up a bit. Um, exposure is great, good details. Love the detail on the rocks. And this one is by George Clayton. George, you want to say anything about your image tonight?
Well, the only thing I'll add to that, Ralph, is uh, I spent a lot of time trying to do the technical things in this photo and uh, and I was very pleased with it until I looked at it for longer than 10 seconds. Realize this is not really a great photo and, and uh, and Ralph kind of mentioned it. It's, it's lacking a, another element uh, like a canoe in the lake or, or a bird flying by or, although it was long exposure, it'd be pretty hard to get those things standing still or somebody sitting on the rock or, or. I mean, the, the, the bridge is way too far and uh, in the middle that you couldn't really look at that as a subject. So technically I, I was very pleased with it, but I'm not really happy with this photo at all. Uh, just because it lacks, uh, it lacks interest after looking at it for, if you took all the color out of it, it wouldn't be very interesting at all.
It is what it is. Thanks, George. He must have stood in a spot and seen almost this picture. Uh, first comment I remember came up was they want to see all the truck. Cause there's only half a truck there, but you know, whatever. Uh, meets the subject, nice layering. I mean, you've got bottom, middle and top all showing reflection, which is really good. Uh, the color of the truck works well. You have the blue, the red, the yellows. That's nice. Um, exposure is great. Then, then we degraded to how we could improve it by moving this way, that way, cropping here, there and everywhere and um, I think the photographer chose well, just sticking with what they were, because every change we suggested probably wouldn't make it any better. So, and this one's by um, Judy Gunlock. Judy here today? I think it's her.
Yeah, I'm here.
You know, tell us about your image.
Nothing really much else to say.
Oh, that's fair enough. Yeah. I think you told us that truck kind of appeared and disappeared real quick. You couldn't get the whole thing anyway.
Well, yeah, I didn't have it on burst mode. So by the time the second click went, the truck was already gone. So.
Yeah, yeah. I think you covered the subject very well. Thank you.
Yeah, just a thought on the image area, you know, what might be interesting and kind of fun is to take perhaps the middle uh, area where all the brick is and uh, just mask that off and make that into a black and white tone. Just to really pop some more questions. That could be more along the lines of a Byron Lee. Mystical trick there. Anyway, that was just for fun.
Good picture, Judy.
And she tells Judy about how you, how you were waiting for a truck or something to come by, because that's, that's really interesting to know that you were waiting to set up the shot.
Well, yeah, the first day I went downtown looking for reflections, there was a bunch of cars parked there. And um, so I had to come back another day on the weekend when I figured there wouldn't be cars and there weren't. But then, then there was hardly any traffic or people walking. I, I was actually wanting, wanting a person to walk by. But there were hardly any people downtown. So anyway, the truck came by and I'm like, oh, yay, truck.
Oh, well done. I've got another fun image here. This, this person worked well. There, there's lots happening here and it's lots of, the first expression we had was fun. It's a fun image, a nice tight crop, great angle, well thought out image and timing, great colors. Uh, yellow, red and a bit of blue, good exposure. Um, one comment was perhaps a bit more room on the left because it's almost touching. It is really, really a really dynamic picture. I think that a lot mostly is because of the angle chosen to take it. The little bird up in there thing and wait, number word, time it says Shanghai in the picture is really great. The way it pops up a black background is really good. Yeah, this is, this is a nice image. This is by Trevor Miller. Is Trevor here tonight?
I am.
Uh, tell us about your image.
Uh, I shoot prime lenses mostly. And I was with some people and we're going into the owl and I just had a couple of seconds and I didn't feel like backing up with my feet. So it is what it is where it was and I, I liked it. And then when I uh, got it into processing, I just uh, made the shadows a bit deeper and whatnot. Uh, I'm not sure about the top left corner being empty like that, but other than that, I like it.
Don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Nicely dynamic image there. You get that tilt.
Another thing I might suggest is toning down where that interior bit is the white with the photo line in the wall. Maybe tone that down a bit, but other than that.
That'd be pretty easy to do.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great shot. I love the angle, great angle. Well done.
Thank you.
No, nice picture. We love the reflection. The reflection is stunning. Nice and sharp, the use of the trees to frame both the tower and the, both towers, you know? Um, you got this strong diagonal line. And you got the strong tower punching through it, but not quite in the center, just a little off center. Good color balance going on there. You got a little bit of blue sky. You got some yellow in the trees. Um, great exposure. The pops of yellow really helped the image. Um, good framing. Yeah, it's really well done. We're speculating. It's like, um, this is taken in the middle of the day in Lethbridge because it's downtown and it's empty. Anyway, this is Sigrid's image. Is Sigrid here today? I think it's her.
I'm here.
Tell us about your picture.
That was from our field trip downtown when it was supposed to be the rainy field trip. So, and it wasn't so rainy, but we had some great puddles and I think Chris Oates and I were the last ones kind of still walking around and we came across this one in the puddle. So, and I thought it was kind of cool.
You did a great job on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm glad I didn't put in my picture that's identical to that.
I know. I thought about that. I'm like, man, Chris and I always put in the same picture.
Another great image. Can't go wrong in the mountains. Nice fresh snow, nice whites. Whites are great. The water moves your eye through the image because it's, you see it kind of scoops from the bottom left over to the right and because it joins the river, it tends to move your eye back to the left. So that's a really nice way to do it. Uh, there was a comment, perhaps a bit more pop on the mountains by adjusting the yellow slider. And the tufted grass in the foreground really nicely anchors the image. And the, the still water is just beautiful for the reflection. So very well done. And this is done by Ruth. Ruth Reader. Is she here today? Nope.
Yeah, I'm here.
Tell us about your image.
Um, it was just one of those things. We got up for a, both days to see if we could get the morning light. And I was trying to get some other ones with crooked trees in it and they just weren't working, but when I done my original, look at all the pictures that I took that day, I'd actually discarded this one. And it wasn't until I was sort of showing things to Doug, he said, maybe you should take another look at that one. So that's what, that's how it kind of ended up here.
That's well done. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And when I made the comment about the yellow slider, Ralph, it was for the trees to try to get a little more, uh, in the a little more color, I guess, into the trees. It wasn't, it wasn't really about the mountains.
Oh, wasn't it? Who takes these notes? God.
Yeah, I don't know.
Wow, going on here. Yep. That, that's our first comment was wow, lots of pop. Uh, good duck placement. It's hard to put your duck in the right place. Lot of comment about losing the garbage can on the right inside. And then got to the banner that's just kind of above it as well, which is, you know, these are pluses and minuses to images. Great yellow bush. Um, it's got huge impact and so does this reflection. And it kind of carries a bit off to the left as well with the other bushes, the palm trees. Obviously it's not Lethbridge. It's not Niki Ugo. The reflection is not the main focus of the image, however, and um, one of the things was commented on is that the left side, which really didn't have a lot of great stuff going on and it could be cropped off and just turn this perhaps into a, a vertical focusing on the tree and its reflection on the yellow bush. Might get a, a stronger but different picture. And uh, this one is by Chris Oates. So Chris, want to tell us about your image?
So this was in Lethbridge. It was uh, two weeks ago in Victoria at Beacon Hill Park. And uh, I, when I was selecting a reflection picture, I, I looked through my uh, pictures and found I had probably uh, 50 reflection pictures that I took this year. And, and they were all perfect reflections and this one wasn't a perfect reflection. And I thought, maybe I'll try something a little different. So uh, I included this one.
I think you chose well. I should be at Beacon Hill Park next week, actually. I wonder if the flowers are still yellow.
Who knew that Victoria had so many palm trees?
There's some on top of office buildings in Vancouver too. It's really strange.
Yeah, lots of stuff going on in there. Your eye can kind of just dance around the image. Oh, there's a duck, another duck.
Yeah, there's a whole whack of ducks, actually. I think that's what it's called, a whack of ducks, not a flock. Nice picture, Chris.
And they're not in a row.
That's true. We've had some very good pictures tonight. This one is the water dreamlike. When I first saw this image, my eye was immediately drawn to the or just around the, the bunker there, you got this, the saw swooping greens and right below it, you got the, the really delicate watercolor like reflections going on there. And then your eye moves more to the right and it's like, wow. This is, this has got lots of punch, great use of color. You got the leading line from the left going, you know, from the right wrapping around and back again. Yeah, let's see which one, what do you say about this? Loved, loved the long exposure, great balance between the highlights and low lights. And uh, one of the comment was puzzle worthy. So if you want to make a puzzle, this would be a good one. Uh, this is by Doug Patcher. Doug, you want to tell us about your spectacular image?
Well, I was, I was playing around with uh, fall colors uh, at the end of September and um, I came across this one and I was also trying out uh, a number of different things, including long exposure. So I think these, this was a, uh, three images um, that were combined, that were uh, merged together and uh, they were, they were taken at about 13 seconds. So that's why the water is so, so smooth. Um, the negative side of that one, I, I sort of looked at it later was that, that a lot of the focus is fairly soft because of the long exposure, but I wanted to um, to put it in and, and see what uh, what sort of comments are drawn from it.
Yeah, I think we universally liked it. And we, of course, immediately called up the data on the picture to see how long the exposure was and all that kind of stuff and and uh, yeah, it's, you should make a puzzle out of this sucker. It's pretty good. Where is it anyway?
It's uh, in Lethbridge here down at the country club.
There's some nice reds going on there. Oh, okay. Thanks.
I think the only place we noticed the focus was in the, in the bottom right in that bush that there's like one branch there that must have been moving. But we don't notice it anywhere else in the image. Very cool.
Back at Henderson Lake again. Reflection is almost perfect. We're, this is us. We're always speculating. What would you do? We're wondering if you should take a bit of a step forward to get the uh, reflection separated from those rocks and lose a bit of the green. Because you don't need the green very much. The band of rocks on the far shore is, it's really pretty. It's really good. And then if you focus just on the, I've just above the grass and above the rocks, that is really, is very reminiscent of the one uh, I think Maximus one at Park Lake. And you got these trees, it's great reflection of a band of rocks or something along the edge. Yeah, it's commented, too much foreground. Another comment was use a bit of a gradient filter to darken the bottom. Um, the distant line of stones is wonderful. Would be interesting, flip the vertical with the grass cropped off. So we're thinking of all kinds of different things, different crops. You make it stronger, just different. And this one is by Gail Shaw. Is, is she here today? I can't recall.
I think we said no.
No.
Or anyways.
Yeah, it's a nice image. We enjoyed it. That's a great image. Got a lot of great images tonight. Like the reflections um, and how the water seems to be calming near the shore, which is usually how it is. Uh, so the reflections aren't bothered by ripples quite as much. Uh, likes to be able to see the whole mountains you do and all the triangles in the image. You have the mountains triangles, you have section in the bottom making a triangle. You have the ripples making triangles. And the shapes, the, the roof lines making triangles. Something about the contrast in the straight lines of all the houses and the roughness of the mountain. The whole image is so calming. It's also really, really sharp. The reflections are awesome. Uh, I've got some great green details in the mountains, which really got the colors of the buildings that really pop out and then you kind of see the softness of the greens in the mountains. Wispy clouds, great reflections, nice ripples. This one's by Kathleen Clemm. Kathleen, you want to tell us about your image?
Hey, um, yeah, a, a couple of years ago, uh, 2019, before COVID, uh, the beginning of June, my oldest son and I went to Norway. And uh, we did a full meal deal. We did a whole bunch of stuff. Uh, we started out in Bergen and we did a fjord cruise. Uh, and uh, this was taken uh, one evening uh, and I did like what Ralph said. I don't travel with my big camera. I had, I have a power, Canon Powershot and a little uh, Panasonic Lumex waterproof shockproof thing. But it was so overwhelming, just beautiful all day, every day. There was so much to take. So this was actually probably like about 10:30 at night. Uh, and that was, this was taken with my cell phone because my other two cameras had powered up for the day. So we were coming into port there, wherever that was. And I can't remember now where it was, but it was just so amazing. Was, didn't even want to go to sleep because there was, you thought you'd miss out on something.
I see you've got a convert for cellphone photo. Well done. Proud of you. Well, that's the last image and thanks everybody for, it was a real pleasure for us to critique them. It was really fun. I recommend critiquing.
Check the um, chats here. Well, if you had an image in here, if you want to check your chat.
Who, what was that? Sorry?
Sorry, I'm just checking the, if, if you had an image in here, if you want to check the uh, chat, then you can uh, see if there are any comments there that to your image. So I am going to stop sharing here, I hope. Made it back this time. So um, again, if anybody needs a break, just make sure you shut off your video and feel free to leave and go grab, grab a drink or anything. Um, Chris, if you're ready, then we'll do the field trip show. leave and go grab, grab a drink or anything. Um, Chris, if you're ready, then we'll do the field trip show.
I'm not ready. Just hang on.
You're almost ready?
Almost, just hang on. The other one up. You have it there?
I can see it.
I think your image is stalled.
Did it stop?
Yeah.
Yeah, it froze.
Okay, just hang on. Start that again. I made it fullscreen and it screwed it up.
Are we able to see stuff now? Mike?
Zoom is kind of funny.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, everybody who went out there for um, submitting your images.
All right, this is the
Oops. Anybody that was there, Sigrid, do you have any comments about the field trip, how it went and what kind of day it was and all that?
Oh, it was a good day and, but I think we had eight or twelve people come, so it was a good turnout. I just find, I don't think I personally like Pavan Park all that much, but um, I'm hoping the others probably did though.
Yeah, it's funny how I don't know, it's pretty in the fall when, when there's um, pretty colors in all the bushes and stuff. But I found this year, all the bushes seem to lose all their color. Usually they stick around longer than the leaves on the tree, but this year it seemed like the bushes really lost their color. A lot. Um. I was gonna say something, but I don't remember what it was. Um, anybody else? Oh, do you know, um, do we have another one lined up?
Um, I'm trying to get ahold of the fellow from Kirkham Truck Museum, but he hasn't called me back, but um, in uh, Coldale, the Kinsman Club has on Wednesday nights and I think Saturday night's a little their Christmas light display. It's like a fraction of the size of the Japanese gardens. And it'd only be like a half an hour field trip at most, but I thought we could do that. And then I'm trying to figure out something else that we might be able to do to kind of make it worth our while, I guess, to go or something. So, but I'll try um, George from Kirkham again, maybe tomorrow. And see if I can talk to him about coming in in December.
That's Warren Place. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Um.
I've got a quick question about uploading images.
Yep.
Uh, do we still have to resize our images when we upload them to that SmugMug site?
You don't have to, no.
Oh, because before we had to downsize them to like nineteen, twenty by whatever.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't really matter, right? Your screen is only so big if you want downsize that you can, but as far as SmugMug is concerned, you don't have to. Um.
And as far as the field trip shows, I, I don't care what size they are.
Okay.
I just had one question. I was, I thought I'd uploaded them for the field trip, but I obviously hadn't. Uh, I must've sent them to the wrong place or something.
When did you send them in, Ian?
Um, Monday.
I know they weren't there.
Wow. Hmm. I'll have to do something differently, I guess.
Um, you uploaded them the same. I should've asked you when, when we were talking about your other ones.
Yeah, the same. There was another line under the bottom and it just said Chris on it. So I suspected that was for Chris Oates. And the one above was for the theme, like there were two
Right.
Two, two lines to uh, deliver them to.
Yeah. Uh.
They did exactly the same thing. They said they were in and there was a big check mark and a hooray and carry on. So I, I carried on.
Uh, I guess I need to start double checking the field trip ones too. Um, I will, I will check in on to see. Trying to think when, cause I, no, I didn't, I don't move them over for you, Chris, right? You just go right into the
Yeah, I just downloaded them right from SmugMug.
Okay, we'll see if we can uh, figure it out for you, Ian. Sorry about that.
I was uh, wondering whether the um, those two links could be added to the website. I didn't see them when I looked the other day.
No, I, I guess, I guess because the website is public, so I don't know how much to put on there. Like we have no way of I mean, I guess it doesn't matter. People that aren't part of our club probably won't upload anything, right?
Yeah, I never thought of it being public.
Cause that's why I don't have like the password to our, to our photo site um, there. Um. But people probably wouldn't wouldn't see it and upload. I, it probably would be pretty safe, I would think. And you can always delete it if we, we found it, it was a problem. I will add that for next month so that it is there. I know, I do know that I've got it. I, I thought I had updated it to saying not to um, upload to the theme like, like it was before, but I just looked today and I guess it's still that way, so. So I'll try to get that updated. I will put the links there. If we have trouble with it, we can always take it down. Um. And that might help, but Ian, I am sorry, I will double check to see if I can figure out what happened, because we don't usually have a problem as long as it says hooray and all that stuff. It's usually good.
It must be lost into the cosmos somewhere.
Yeah. Okay, um, so I think, Kristy, you're back on again for the, for your ed segment.
Okay. So uh, what I'm talking about is the new update to Lightroom, which uh, was released at the end of October and uh, they said it was, they said it was the uh, the, the biggest change to Lightroom since Lightroom first started. And pretty well what it does is it um, gives you different tools to do the same thing that you've done before. So uh, you can still use the old tools, but there's new tools as well.
So this is the old interface for Lightroom. And there's a series of buttons. The first one was crop. Then there was a spot healing brush. Red eye removal. And then there was a graduated filter. So on this photo, uh, using some basic exposure, bring down the uh, graduated filter on the sky. And we can adjust the, the brightness and the, the exposure, the contrast, highlights. And make it a little more dramatic sky with a little bit of, of uh, color adjustment. And uh, add a little more pizzazz to the photo. Now, in the case of, of uh, this photo, uh, the, the foreground is a little bit dim, so uh, with the brush tool, we can just paint over top of the, the area that we want it to adjust. And we put the uh, show mask overlay checkbox on so that uh, we can see what we're, we're painting on. And that should be pretty good. And then we can make some adjustments to the, the brightness of the image, the, the color balance. Take out a little of the green. And uh, adjust the highlights and the, the shadows. And bump up the clarity a little bit. With the new version of Lightroom, which was released in October of this year, there's the same tools along the top, except there's a new one labeled mask or masking. That has the same tools as uh, we found before, like linear gradient and radial gradient. And as well as the uh, the refining tools like uh, color range and luminance range. So with the brush, brush tool, we can uh, just draw on to the image of areas that we want to mask. And masking is pretty well just the shape of uh, your selection that you want to adjust. The linear gradient provides a tool where you have a shape that goes across the photo that you can adjust. And you can also adjust the opacity of the tool throughout its uh, its passage. So in the case of this one, we draw the shape across and then we can adjust the, the opacity. With the radial gradient, we can just draw a circular mask, which will now affect her head. So we can adjust the uh, brightness or the uh, the softness or whatever. Now with color range, you can just select one area of the picture and use a, a color to, to refine it. You can uh, make it more defined and then adjust that area of the screen. So in this case, we're gonna make her uh, her skin a little softer by moving down the clarity. Although in this picture, the uh, her face is already fairly soft. Now we're gonna try selecting the subject. And it's, it's done an okay job, but uh, there are some areas that are, are spilled over. And so first of all, in this case, we're going to name the mask, so we'll call it girl. And uh, and then we want to subtract the areas that we don't want to affect from the picture. One of the things you can do is use different masking, uh, different modes to show the masking that you're using. Like putting it on a black and white background or the image on a black background. Or image on a white background, which doesn't work for this image. Or just white on black. So it's pretty well showing a mask. So in this case, we're going back to the overlay with, with color. And you can either uh, toggle it so that it's automatically shows the the uh, the red color or else you can turn that off. You can also select a different color if you want by just clicking on the red box. And selecting a color or the opacity. And you can also select the unaffected, unaffected area. So in this case, what you adjust is still the same, but it shows you the area that you won't be affecting. So we'll go back to the uh, the red color. And we'll work on this one a little later. So the new tools really excel at things like landscapes. They're good for balancing the sky and the foreground and, and uh, and also the subject. They're good for balancing the sky and the foreground and, and, uh, and also the subject. So in this case, we're going to let it select the sky and it did a pretty good cha- job of, uh, selecting the sky. So we'll turn off the, uh, mask overlay. And do some basic adjustments to the sky. So first of all, adjusting the exposure a little bit, uh, adding a little more contrast. Uh, taking down the highlights. Just basic adjustments to. Bring out the sky a little more. Then we're going to add just a little bit of color to, to the image. Making it a little warmer sky to match the, uh. The grass color. Now doing another, adding another mask, we select the sky again. And this time we're taking that sky mask and we're going to invert it. Now by clicking the three little dots, you can invert the mask and now everything except the sky is selected. We'll turn off the overlay and, uh. First of all, bringing down the exposure a little bit, uh, taking down the highlights a bit. And bringing up the, the shadows, uh, just basic adjustments, adding a little clarity to it. Or taking away the clarity. And maybe reducing the saturation just a touch. Now if we move on to the next image, the problem is the ground is still very dark compared to the sky. So first of all, we select the sky. And there isn't a lot of adjustment to do to the sky, so let's invert it. And now we have the ground. Turn off the image overlay. And we'll bring the brightness up. Take the highlights down, add a little clarity to it and adjust the. Make it a little bit warmer image. Now looking at a picture from my recent trip to Victoria, there's, uh. In the park in the city, there's, uh, quite a few peacocks that are just loose on the. In the park. This picture was very backlit, so using the new tools, the masking tools, we, uh, select subject. Which in this case does a pretty good job of selecting the bird. Now you don't have to, uh. Turn off the overlay, but in this case we do and, uh, adjust the brightness and. They make basic adjustments to the, the, uh, the peacock itself. Without going too far, hopefully. Add a little saturation. And. Now the, uh, problem with this image is still that the background is way too bright. So we create a new mask, select the subject again and invert it this time, which is everything except the bird. Turning the, the overlay off and we can adjust the background, so it's a little, little darker, not quite as overpowering. We can, uh, create more masks, which would brighten up the tree limb if we wanted to hit brighter. But that should be adequate for this image. The best things about the, uh, the new tools seem to be selecting sky. And inverting it. So in this case, it's, uh, a shot at China Beach this last month. And in this case, it, it did an okay job of, of, uh, selecting the sky, but there's a little bit on the horizon that, uh. Is, uh, is not selected, so. All that requires is adding to the brush. And doing a little brush work to select the area that. Wasn't automatically selected. There we go. Now we fit it back on the screen. Turning off the overlay so we can see what we're doing, but it automatically turns off when you start adjusting. So adjust the exposure, the, the contrast, the highlights and. Adding a little clarity. Now doing the same thing over again, we select the sky again. Which should be the same area. And this time we're going to invert it. So it's everything except the sky. A little bit of adjusting the. The exposure, the highlights. And. A little bit of clarity to the water to make it a little sharper and then warming it up a little bit. Gives it a nice sunset look. Moving on to the tools to select subject. They're much like selecting the sky, only this time it's a lot of, uh, selecting people, selecting. Any object that's dominant in the, the picture. So it could be a, a still life, uh, work of art or. Or, uh, an animal or a pet or, or anything you like, but in this case it's a person. By putting it on, uh, just looking at the mask itself, it, it did an okay job, but it didn't, uh. Fill in all the areas, so adding to the, the mask with a, a brush makes it. Makes it a little more solid mask shape. Very quickly going over the. The portrait. And then we'll turn off the overlay and adjust the. The contrast, the exposure. And adding some clarity to it eventually as well. And it adds a little more punch to the, the portrait. With not much work. In this case, the portrait is a little bit more busy, but still works the same. Select subject. And it did a pretty good job, but again, it didn't do a perfect job. So in this case, we're going to. Invert it quick first. Invert it firstly and then add to the mask. By, to get rid of all the extra shape using a linear gradient. And then just tightening up the. Tightening up the graduate. So we turn that off and we can adjust the backdrop now. So adding a little more light to the subject and by decreasing the light on the background. So lastly, here's a, a photo of Vancouver and, uh. The buildings were a little dark, so we'll just brighten it up a little bit. Before we go anywhere, then we're using the masking tool to select the sky. And it did a pretty good job of that. So we'll turn them, the, uh, overlay off and bring down the exposure on the sky. And there's very little rimming on the trees, so it did a pretty good job. Add a little clarity. And I think that's a, that's a finished picture.
So that's kind of a basic overview of, of, uh, the new update to Lightroom. I don't know if there's any questions?
Has everyone been using the new Lightroom? Much?
Not yet.
I've been using it a fair bit and I, I find the layout is a little better than what I. What the ver- previous version had. I kind of liked it myself.
I've used it a bit.
Yeah, I've been using it as well. I'm, uh, I'm happy with it. It, um, the, um. The masking is, uh, is actually quite good.
All the, uh, all the tutorials I, I saw on YouTube seem to do a lot better job of selecting subjects than. What I found in, in my experience. I, I always seem to need to, uh, do adjusting afterwards.
I find the subject one can be, can be difficult depending on the subject.
Most of the, most of the tutorials choose a subject that has very little background. Uh, anything else in the picture and it makes it real easy to ju- to choose. So that's, that's one of the reasons that happens. It's just for speed and agility. Then they don't have to go in and refine their selection at all.
I do find even if it doesn't do a perfect job, it still saves you a lot of time.
Yeah.
Um, because it'll select the, the great majority of what you want and then you tweak a little bit and that's, yeah. Essentially using the same tools, just improved, I guess.
Yeah.
As one of the tutorials said, if it only does an eighty percent job, well, it's done eighty percent of your work for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Saves a lot of time.
Thanks for putting that together for us. Um, no more questions, anybody? Thank you again, Chris. That was, uh, really good, really, really well put together for us.
Yeah, Chris, it was very good.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I am going to just talk a little bit about PhotoFusion. I think we've only got one, maybe Ruth here that. Might not know about PhotoFusion, but I really feel like there's a lot more things going on these days. We might have to test for. Ask you QR code or whatever, but we probably will be able to have it inside, I'm thinking. I don't know if CAS has opened up yet or not, or they're doing something with the Christmas thing. So I think you have to book a time and stuff, so. We might have limited people coming in or who knows what's going to happen by script. But I think we will plan something for PhotoFusion. Um, and for those that don't know too much about it. Um, basically it's creating slideshow of whatever you want and as many members as we can gather them from. Uh, sometimes, uh, sometimes you can do two if we don't have too many members, but usually it's about one show per member. Um, and they can range anywhere up to six minutes long and, uh. Really try to keep it under six minutes long, because we find that's kind of where the attention span starts leaving, starts leaving us. So on that note, I didn't get out a note also, also about being their segments. If there's anybody in the membership that has, uh, been there or any. Any type of show really that they have made up and they would like to show it just at a meeting. Uh, please just contact the club through the contact thing. I was going to put out a message and try to find a being their show for today, but I didn't. So instead I thought I'd pull up a couple of old, um. Older shows, which I could have gotten from somebody else if my computers weren't down, but since they were down, I had to pull ones that were mine on here. So one of, the first one I'm going to show is, is kind of from the Portland, uh, Vancouver, Washington area and there's, um, some. Pictures of, from, taken from the train windows or whatever. So that's more or less like a being their show. And I did show it at PhotoFusion one year. And right after that is a very short show, just to show you that you can. Create just an afternoon of shooting of some kind of fun abstract work and, um. And create a two-minute show, which is really nice to have some of those really short shows in the, in the PhotoFusion too. So we'll see if this will work. Okay, you guys can all see that, then I'll start it. Let me know if anything is wrong.
Nice.
So that's it. That's the example of the longer show, although I don't think this is necessarily anything, but a longer show and a very short show, just have something to get some creative juices going or whatever. Okay, that is all we have.
How did you do those those pictures, those bubble pictures?
Bubble pictures there. Well, you have colored paper underneath a bowl, like a glass bowl. And then you have oil and yeah, just it's just oil drops on on the water, but it's the colored paper underneath that's making the colors.
Oh, it's just
like a bowl of water and then you put oil on top of it to create the the bubbles.
Oh, cool.
The bubbles aren't actually a color. It's a reflection of the
Yeah, whatever you have under.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
You, Laurlee, do you have a a date for when PhotoFusion might happen?
No, it it usually was the first week, first full week in March. We can try to do that. We've got somebody, but Gail, who's not here, but Gail was supposed to be helping yours kind of steer. We're trying to get her to get going on the on the PhotoFusion and I haven't really given her any things to do, but it's something I was thinking of is that I think I'll get her to double check with CASA and see what they say about tentatively booking it for then. So it's usually it was usually a Tuesday and a Wednesday. That first full week of March. But it could be, we have had it in April, I think, one year, because I think there's things going on. But that's when it usually is. So we will let you know as soon as we see what CASA says. I don't know, like if we end up having it outdoors and Chris had Chris had told us that he had even having it outdoors if we really had to and Chris had said that he's done something at the movie mill that was outdoors and they were really good to work with. So if we decided that COVID is still bad and we want to do it outdoors. I would think we would want to have it a little bit later in the spring and not in March. So
Well, the way movies work, you can go fill a theater now, so we probably should be able to do something.
Probably.
Yeah.
We might have to space it out a little or something and who knows, maybe go over three nights or something, but I'm I'm almost sure unless unless we take a downturn again, then I'm almost sure we should be able to do something by then.
I just thought I'd mention too, I was at CASA, I don't know, last week or the week before, whatever. And they had a security guy, like he has a desk right now by the front door. And he checks your your code when you come in with his scanner and then you have to show your ID. So I imagine we wouldn't have to do it like at our own event.
Right, we would have for ourselves that, oh, that's 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 good to know. That, you know, that's something that we don't have to look after. The castle will probably would probably look after it. So
No, if we're having an event, it might be, you know, I don't know, this just was just like during regular daytime hours.
I would I would think that they would have to check because they don't know that the people are coming to our event. Right? The person that's walking in the door could be going, I imagine they have to check everybody that comes in. So that's that's a good point that we don't
And you could only enter through the main doors at the front, like you couldn't come in that back entrance?
Right.
Yeah.
I think if it's a city building, it's a it's all looked after in all the city buildings.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a good thing. So I think we can pretty much look forward to doing that in the springtime. So everybody started, I'll maybe be thinking it would be good to try to start an information page on our on our website about different slideshow options that we have because it's really kind of out there right now. And we've never put something together compiled to see, you know, what we what's available for Mac and what's available for PCs and whatever that people have been using that we can offer some help with. We'll try to do that. Anything else anybody got going or want to know about or questions or anything? Be open.
We're good.
Awesome. So if we're good, we'll call it a night. And yeah, yeah. Let me have a be in there segment you want to do and a couple of people that have asked me for secret assignments and I haven't gotten that out to them. I can go that tonight so I can make sure I do that. If anybody else would like to do secret assignment for the new year, then you know, and I'll get that out to them. Otherwise, thanks for showing up.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Good night.